Good evening to those watching. My name is Stephen Barbie and I'm joined by my co-moderator tonight, Joanna Herner, and we will be moderating the Justice Matter Criminal Justice and Democracy Candidates Forum. Before we describe tonight's format, let's welcome the County Commissioner candidates. From the top left on my screen and working clockwise, we have Shannon Reed, Sarah Telfer, Telfer Fino, excuse me, and Commissioner Thelman. These are the candidates running in the primary elections slated for August 4th. Welcome the candidates. Over the next 90 minutes or so, we'll be facilitating a discussion structured around four topics: Expansion of the Douglas County Jail; Leadership in the area of Criminal Justice Reform; The Mental Health Crisis Center; and Public Accountability and Citizen Engagement. For each of our topics, we will have a lead question and give each of you two minutes to describe your position. We'll also set aside a time to further clarify your response. Our hope is to provide a clear and understanding to the voters where you stand on these issues. You can help us with the objective by doing two things. First, doing follow-up. You may jump in if you think it may help clarify your position in contrast to your opponent's. Speak with precision so that the voters can understand the policies and leadership positions you will make if elected. As moderators, we would seek a fair balance in terms of time. We may also interrupt, ask you to be more specific, or ask for a clarifying question to you all. We remind our audience and candidates that Justice Matters is a nonprofit. We cannot endorse any candidates, but we will endeavor to educate the voters with the utmost clarity. Before the end of the form, we'll provide you a time to share your final thoughts. You may use this time as you wish, but we encourage you to clarify your position related to tonight's topics. Let's get started. Our first topic is mass incarceration.
Thank you all for being here. I imagine that you are aware that the United States puts more people behind bars than any other country in the world, and the massive confinement of people in America is known as mass incarceration. While prisons get most of the attention, the Prison Policy Initiative, among other organizations, points out that jails actually play a critical role in driving mass incarceration. We know that Douglas County has an incarceration rate that is below the national average, but between 2011 and 2018, our community witnessed a staggering 94% increase in the number of people that were locked in our jail. Some have suggested that the increase was because of the increase in the population of our county, but the reality is that our jail grew at 12 times the rate of our county's growth. Some suggested that the number of people in jail was a product of rising crime, but just last year, last July, the Journal World reported that Douglas County saw crime rates dropping to a 15-year low between 2017 and 2018, which was the same time that the jail population was peaking and we were struggling with overcrowding. And all of this is further problematic because new efforts to attempts to reduce the jail population have not had the hoped-for impact on the rapid rise of incarceration in Douglas County. As just one example, the new pre-trial release program that was announced in 2017 was predicted to release 50 to 70 people a day from the jail, but the average daily jail population actually rose slightly between 2017 and 2018. And so with that background, we'll start alphabetically for this round by last name, and you'll have two minutes to reply to our lead question. There will be a timer that sounds at the end of the two minutes, and we'd ask you to just finish up whatever thought you're on at that point so we can move on to the next person. And the question we'd like you to respond to is, are you concerned about the number of people in jail and Douglas County's contribution to mass incarceration? And if so, how will this concern inform your thoughts on jail expansion? And if not, why not? So we'll begin with you, Shannon Reed.
Thank you, Joanna. Thanks for all that background. I think that's really important truths to speak and acknowledge in our community, and so I appreciate all those facts and numbers for background. Yes, I am very concerned with the population of our jail for a number of reasons. Certainly, the most recent information that we've heard, reported from the CJCC and some of the data reports that have been reviewed, have shown that we have a higher-than-national-average disparity in the amount of Black and Brown people, but especially Black people that we are incarcerating in our county jail. And it's a huge problem. It's disappointing to be from this place that claims so much progressiveness and open, anti-racist, abolitionist, historical roots, and for us to have data that shows us that we are not living up to those values and we are not displaying those standards in our criminal justice system here locally. And that needs to be addressed. I think we've known that for a long time. Now we have more facts to back it up. Anecdotally, as a court advocate for Domestic Violence Center, who at one point in time several years ago was going in twice, sometimes three or four times a week to either facilitate support groups or visit with female survivors that were in the county jail, we saw an uptick in the population. We saw that that was spiking even though, as you said, crime rates are lowering, and that doesn't compute for me. And so all of that is telling to me that we have not addressed the core issues of our system being racist and anti-poor and overloaded with the amount of cases and prosecutions and refusals to dismiss things and refusals to get rid of, ask for more OR bonds instead of cash bonds. We haven't actually tried to empty the jail. COVID has done that for us to some degree, and that was an incredible adaptation to the circumstances. And we need to go back to root causes and figure out how to release more people because we're contributing to mass incarceration.
Thank you. Sarah Telfer.
Yes, thank you, Joanna. I'd like to just say that the fact that... So first of all, yes, I'm very troubled by the rise of the numbers of people in jail, and I don't feel that it's necessarily justifiable to lock them all up. I adamantly continue to oppose a jail expansion on those grounds. I have over 25 years of experience working with homelessness issues and affordable housing issues, and because of that, have gained an understanding of mental health issues in our community. So there are two points I'd like to make as quickly as I can. The first is, I am well aware, have served on the mayor's task force on homeless services. I have years of experience knowing what the gaps are in housing. I've known that the number of homeless people are rising, and they go to jail, sometimes for being homeless. And we haven't invested in permanent supportive housing, especially for people with mental illness. We have a campus that we maybe broke ground on recently for mental health, but it isn't built, and when it is, it will serve 25% of the need, known need, in the community for severe and persistent mental illness and crises. So I also know that through every single measure of public health, we know that we are failing people of color in our community, whether that's the disproportionate numbers in the shelter, the disproportionate numbers in the jail, the disproportionate numbers who are uninsured, the disproportionate numbers of Black, Brown, and Indigenous children who are getting expelled from school or suspended. So I know that we need to invest in our community first, and that all of these things, including homelessness, have deep implications for why people end up in jail in the first place.
Thank you. Commissioner Thelman. You're still muted, sorry.
Oh, thank you so much. I'm sorry. I want to respond really quickly to say that the county is providing for quite a bit of housing for our most vulnerable people. We were spending over $5.5 million between the years 2019 and 2021, as well as millions and millions of dollars, over $6 or $7 million on behavioral health programs that didn't exist prior to 2016. So with all of those extra services being provided, I'd also say I'm incredibly concerned about the folks who are in our county jail, because I know incarceration has a negative effect on people while they're there. About 50% of the people in the jail are only there for 24 hours or less, but the rest of the folks there really can feel the effects. And that's why the county has invested, again, millions of dollars in quite a few programs, alternatives to incarceration, diversion programs, and special courts. Since about 2017, about 1,000 people have been able to stay out of jail rather than be in jail waiting for their adjudication. In that time, we've also managed to decrease the number of people in the jail with serious mental illness by 56% just in a few years with extra efforts on behavioral health, special counseling services, and real attention to that issue of having over-representation of mentally ill people in the jail. We've identified also a terrible problem with racism and overpopulation of Blacks, especially in the jail, and we have programs that we've already enacted and more programs to come and studies to come to work on that issue. I am, of course, on record for years as being a supporter of jail expansion, but I am not now. Things changed dramatically with COVID, as the other candidates have said, and the jail expansion is off the table, and all of the services we're providing are only adding to our ability to keep people out of the jail and help them be in better shape when they get out and stay out as much as possible. So no, I'm not in favor of the jail expansion, and I hope we have a chance to talk.
Well, thank you for that very introduction, and for each of you to share your understanding about how you feel about mass incarceration. But one out of every nine Black males between the ages of 20 and 34 is incarcerated in the United States, and one out of every three Black males born today can expect to go to prison. And right here in our jail, we disproportionately lockup Blacks and Native population well above the national average, and recent counter reports show that white people are granted a pre-release more often than the Black counterparts who are in jail. We'll start backwards, affability by the last name is Nancy Thelman. You have two minutes to reply to our lead question for clarity. Do you agree that there is a systemic racism in our local criminal justice system? If so, what specifically will you do to address it?
I do believe there's systemic racism in our criminal justice system. I think there's systemic racism in just about every system where humans are together. And in terms of our local criminal justice system, I'm absolutely dedicated to digging down and getting at that problem. We, a few years ago, initiated the Law Enforcement Contact Study to study actual profiling among all the law enforcement departments in Douglas County. That's been taking a long time. They're still gathering data, but we'll know much more about profiling habits in our law enforcement pretty soon. We're also, we're criminal justice partners and we'll be doing deep data dives with those people, with our statistician, Dr. Matt Cravens, looking specifically at each part, the each sequence of our criminal justice system actions, to see where there are specific issues of racism, as represented by too many people of color in the jail or staying longer in the jail or not being accepted into the pre-trial release program or other programs. And also wanting to know if, how those people specifically, if they receive different kinds of support, so they have different levels of success in their time outside of jail. So there's a really deep commitment at the county to do this work against racism in our system. We're also, there are government alliance on race and equity, and we'll be doing implicit bias training within all the partners of the criminal justice system, as well as race studies, and work to identify those areas that we can really own that issue and solve that problem. And all of the partners are going to have to do it, and each of us personally is going to have to commit to examine our own bias and racism and not to just be, not racist, but actually commit to being anti-racist in our lives going forward.
All right. Thank you very much. Ms. Sarah Telfer, what's your perspective on systemic racism in our local criminal justice system?
We have and have had every evidence that we have systemic racism throughout, and really those disproportionate numbers in every measure of public health, including within the jail and within our emergency shelters, speaks to that. I'm sorry, I'm hearing an echo. I'm not quite sure what's causing it.
Been. Mute.
Okay. Okay. So I'm curious, though, given that we have evidence for that, and we have had evidence, and we have community leaders who have been speaking to that for so many years, why we haven't looked at all systems through the lens of race first? Because if we truly understood why systemic racism is occurring and got at the root of the problem, we would also root out a lot of things that trip up people who have mental illness or have substance abuses, or have, are homeless, or struggling to be housed, or have childhood traumas, or have gotten in trouble in the schools and thus got on the school-to-prison pipeline in that way. And yet, we have not done that. I don't, I listen to county commission meetings online, and I can remember a particular meeting where the head of Burt Nash got up and said, "You're underfunding mental health and over-representing how the county commission is investing in it." And I looked at the budget, and Burt Nash's budget has been cut fairly significantly over the last three years. Other services have been cut. I heard people standing up and saying, "You're expanding these court systems, and yet you're not expanding the funding into them adequately to get these, to turn these from just being pilot projects to being full-fledged projects." I know that there are IT problems throughout the sheriff's office and the police department, as most recently evidenced by the fact that neither of them were able...
If you can, could you just wrap up your...
I sure can. I went over my time. Yeah, so the sheriff's office can't export data, and county commissioners aren't holding them accountable for that. So I think the good works aren't enough to justify what we have not done.
Sure. Thank you for that time. Of course, we'll give you a time at the end to give more in-depth to your thoughts, but thank you. Ms. Shannon Reed.
Yes, systemic racism is absolutely at the root of many of the problems that Douglas County's legal system is experiencing at large. The things that I, excuse me, there's empirical evidence of that, and I am interested in inviting Vera Institute in and taking them up on their offer to have that objective, voluntary, data-driven analysis that is also very solutions-based and interested in and has the experience of doing so in multiple other communities throughout the United States. What can and should be done to address the issues of systemic racism, address the criminalization of poverty that we experience in our community, the criminalization of mental health and homelessness that we experience in this community, the criminalization of drug use. There's so many things that are very evident to me, and I'm very interested in being a county commissioner that drives our county leaders at all levels and all the systems to be actionable. We have information that tells us we have issues to address, so it's time to be actionable. I believe that the CJCC should not just be an advisory council, it needs to be an actionable council that has some power to implement new policy suggestions, policies, and both with, within the county commission at large, the district attorney's office and the district court, that there should be some influence there, and that that particular body of people who's been doing some studying and advising in the past few years needs to be more representative of our community. Currently, it has predominantly stakeholders that are from the different parts of the system, law enforcement, the courts, the district attorney's office, and there's not enough voices from the community, from people who have survived the legal system here locally and can speak to that experience. So I think that that needs to be more actionable. I think that the Vera needs to come in and that we need to immediately stop the jail expansion. Oh, sorry.
That's okay. Thank you very much.
We're having some issues with our timer not being heard, so we'll try to indicate a little better, and we do hope to have time for some kind of follow-up questions as we go, but we're going to move on to just a final clarifying question. I heard a lot of, I heard you all saying some similar things with different emphases, but we want to just make sure everyone understands clearly where you stand. So we're going to get to the jail head-on in a minute, but we have this one clarifying question on systemic racism and mass incarceration first, and it's just a yes/no question. So when you answer, please start by saying yes or no, and then if you feel that you need to say a little more to explain your yes/no answer, you'll have a minute just to do that. We'll start with Sarah Talia Pharo. If mass incarceration is a major problem in the United States, which we've all think agreed that it is, and if we have structural racism in our local criminal justice system, then doesn't building a bigger jail contribute to that problem? Just a yes or no question. You may feel the need to elaborate or not.
Yes, of course it does.
Commissioner Thelman.
I know, we do this so often. I'm so sorry. So my simple answer is yes. Expanding the jail would have more people in it, and it's, if the racism continued, it's logical to say that there would be more people of color represented in that expansion. But my hope would be that we would improve our system, work urgently against that racism, and that the numbers in our jail wouldn't be so shameful, shamefully overrepresented of people of color.
And Shannon Reed.
Yes, absolutely. Expanding the jail will further contribute and go in the exact opposite direction that we should be, which is decarceration.
Thank you all. I am, oh, I was going to apologize, but it's lovely. You may hear my daughter's violin practice as a background here. I gave a little background earlier on mass incarceration, and I want to prompt this next question with a little background of the jail expansion plans here in Douglas Early 2018, as you'll remember, county commission voted to call for a special election that combined the Mental Health Crisis Center and the jail expansion on one vote, and that proposal was voted down. Attorneys at Justice Matters had hired, identified a state law that allowed for the tax increase, a tax increase exclusively for the mental health funding, which the county commission placed on the ballot, and it overwhelmingly passed in November of 2018. Then the county commission continued in their plans for jail expansion. On January 29th of this year, they voted to repurpose the sales tax from $94 to fund approximately $29 million expansion with the operational costs to be considered later. And the county staff had predicted that the construction would begin by trainer, architect, and Turner Construction in May of this year, which obviously, for a few reasons, it hasn't. Justice Matters filed a lawsuit to ask the judge whether this was legal for the $94 sales tax to authorize the county to issue debt without giving voters the ability to petition for a vote, and that the judge has declared that the county can use the sales tax to pay for the jail expansion without voter input. Then on March 13th, the coronavirus prompted a rapid release of dozens of inmates that alleviated the overcrowding at the jail overnight. And things such as immediate hearings and increased use of diversions are now being considered as permanent opportunities to safely lower the jail population. And this demonstration that overcrowding at the jail could be reduced safely, along with the tragic murder of George Floyd and the international protests that followed, led county commissioner Patrick Kelly on June 2nd, 2020, to publicly request at a county commission meeting that the county hit pause on the jail expansion as various people involved in the Douglas County criminal justice system worked together to try to keep that jail population low. And that brings us to this election. So we'll start this discussion by giving each of you two minutes to respond to the lead question on the topic, and then hopefully we will have time for some follow-up. So we'll go back to, begin with Shannon Reed, and the question is, the first part of this question is a yes or no question. If elected, will you rescind the January 29th resolution to issue a bond to fund the $29 million jail expansion? Yes or no? And if you will rescind the resolution, how will you work to safely reduce the current jail population? If you would continue on the path towards jail expansion, why do you think that alternatives and reforms won't work? Would you rescind the resolution, and how would you work to safely reduce the jail population? Shannon Reed.
Yes, it would be my honor to, excuse me, I'm sorry. It would be my honor to get elected and rescind that right away as a first order of business. And what I believe I would do and work with the district attorney's office and the district court, along with sheriff's office and LPD and all of the people that need to be working together to find all of the available solutions, which I think is a diversity of tactics. It's continuing to expedite hearings. It's prosecutor's offices showing a willingness to dismiss cases and identify people who do not, who are not served by being in the jail, which I would argue is next to no one, and who could be served in our community by more robust social services that we pivot funding to right away. that we pivot funding to right away. We prosecutors have the power to just, to free a lot of people from our county jail, both the district attorney's office and the city, city of Lawrence municipal officer. So I'm sorry, municipal courts. So that in addition to LPD and the sheriff's office and rural police departments can choose to stop arresting certain, on certain offenses and only doing citations or notice to appear if they do issue that. And the prosecutor's office could be issuing more OR, requesting more OR bonds, which judges are likely to follow. There's just a multitude of opportunities to safely lower the jail population and refocus our funding and our commitments on social services and mental health services in our community.
Thank you. Thank you. Sarah.
Yes, and there's been a lot of conversations in the other races that are going on in this election about the different ways. So I just realized I need to answer your first question first. I would vote to rescind that we don't need that bond debt and we don't need it hanging over us and we don't need that particular opportunity. We need to just close that door. The, I happen to know that other communities that have brought in the Vera Institute and done these comprehensive studies have been very effective in really changing the complexion of criminal justice in their communities and, and a number of other things. One of the things that Vera is offering Lawrence for free is programmers who will come in and have experience working with somewhat flawed or antiquated IT systems and doing a deep extraction of the data that we need to enact positive change. And their recommendations are based on sound data and some very strong algorithms that they apply to use it. So I would fully support that if it hadn't already happened by the time I'm elected. In the meantime, we, we must house everyone. We must expand mental health services. And it doesn't really do to say, well, we, we, you know, we, we are already investing. That is meaningless if we don't have the things in place that we really need in this community. I know that we have needed permanent supportive housing for over 30 years. I personally know people who are on the waiting list for the units that haven't even broken ground yet. So, or maybe they have just broken ground. They, those weren't fast-tracked the way the jail cells, the tower was. So I'll back up and give you an example of a community who got it right, who had a different vision for how they go forward and they used Vera Institute to help them. That's Spokane, Washington.
Sarah, could you close it down about 10 seconds?
So in, by investing in community mental health and housing people first, a suite of other things stabilize, that stabilizes their lives and changes the trajectory of their lives. Thank you. Sorry about that.
Thank you. Thank you, Stephen. I'm not in the room with the timer. Commissioner Thelman.
Well, yes, I, I that resolution and I can put it on our agenda quickly. The, the issue with that though, is that that resolution is really at this point moot. We haven't acted on it and the bids that it was based on are now long, you know, inaccurate. When we changed direction with the COVID changes and the sudden urgent cooperation of all of our criminal justice partners, we put the jail expansion aside. And I will be happy to bring that to the commission to ask my colleagues to take that resolution off the table as well. I am absolutely committed to reducing the jail population. The county commission does not jail people. That we can convene the people who do have control over the jail population. Those would, that would be, I mean, working with the Lawrence Police Department, who is the larger user of the county jail in terms of arrests. Working with the Criminal Justice Data Collaborative, studying the potential for a public defender's office, working with the DA's office to concentrate on dismissing low-level felony cases and working with the defense more, having more concurrence on pre-trial agreements so that more people can take advantage of our alternatives to incarceration. And, and help them have frequent reviews of the cases of people who are waiting in the jail, hoping to be on pre-trial release. Work with the courts for better notification of people as they sometimes miss their court appearances and end up getting warrants for their arrest. We need to, to really get the failure to appear numbers down. We can improve the court technology. They're already using more technology and it's helping get people out more quickly. And we'll, JCC, not so much for studies, but for actual action. And then also work with the state for all the ways they can help us decrease the jail population as well.
Thank you. So I'm interested in, as you follow up, you all agree on several of the things we've talked about. And I'd like to give you a little time to express where you feel you either disagree with those that you're running against or what particular experience and knowledge that you bring that will help you to accomplish these, these goals that we have as a community of reducing racial racism in the system of keeping the, the jail population down. And yeah, so please share how, how you feel you're differentiated from, from others in this. Is there someone who? Shannon, go ahead.
Okay. So I feel like how I'm differentiated from my opponents and from our sitting county commissioner Thelman currently is that I have believed that the jail expansion is the wrong choice for this community since before the ballot question was formulated. And it was an idea that people began hearing about the plans and intentions of the county commission and sheriff's department to move forward with, with making that request of the community. And so I have been quote unquote jail no, as Justice Matters helped coin the phrase for, since the very beginning and believe wholeheartedly that it was the wrong choice for our community for a multitude of reasons. And I've been actively engaged in that, that campaigning and educational awareness for the community and action to stop it since the beginning. And I'm very action oriented in how I do my job as a direct service advocate, how I do community organizing and activism and believe that that is energy that we need on the commission to truly put a stop to something that should have been stopped with our vote years ago. And I have to ask Nancy Thelman to answer to where the seemingly sudden shift of, of opinion and perspective about it has come from. Because as a constituent in this, in district two, for the entirety, almost the entirety of your career as a commissioner and certainly throughout this jail expansion conversation, it has felt that you've been unmovable on the issue. And suddenly you seem moved by it and I would like to.
Why don't we allow Ms. Thelman to give her input?
Thank you. Thank you, Stephen. And thank you, Shannon. I appreciate the question because I know that it's, it's hard to take in such a, such a really significant pivot and trust that it comes from a genuine place. You know, the county is by state statute obligated to provide safe housing for every man and woman in its care and to provide rehabilitation services so that they can hopefully be better, not worse for the wear while they're there. And I believe that Douglas County has a responsibility to provide a decent housing that doesn't add rather than relieve problems. And so, you know, we still are going to have an issue with not being able to house everyone in our jail without an expansion unless we have dramatic, urgent, radical reforms, which because of this remarkable change that COVID has brought, this remarkable creative and wildly great opportunity that we have to, to take this new energy, take this new attention, take various changes that have happened among partners, some retirements, some potential new leadership in the police department, you know, new culture in the police department potentially after the George Floyd event. You know, kind of an awakening in everybody that everybody owns this issue, not just the county commission. And that's where I'm hopeful because everybody is on board. Being at such a rapid pace now and, and making real change and real reform and doing things that we've been asking for, for four years. We made a lot of progress in those four years with alternatives to incarceration, diversion programs, special courts, more behavioral health, decreasing certain, you know, mental health population in jail. We've actually made a lot of progress and kept a lot of people out of jail, but we were stymied in certain areas and now we're not. We have some new leadership in the courts. We have some new energy in the DA's office. We have an opportunity to pull the city in. You know, when they voted to say that they didn't support a jail expansion, then that was their, that was a signal that they needed to get involved and they really hadn't been before. They need to work with.
About 15 more seconds, Commissioner.
Thank you. I'm on a roll. No, I, I mean, I'm excited that, that, that we now have this urgent and incredible opportunity to get it right. You know, you can never, ever promise that you won't do something in the future when, when and if things change. If we have, you know, a continuing jail population problem, especially in the women's unit, there may need to be some changes there so that they are safe and comfortable. But my hope is we won't need to do a single thing to expand our jail because our partners are all on board to do their jobs now. So it makes me hopeful.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sarah?
I have, through my connections in the community, I can remember people I know who volunteered in the jail in various capacities saying as early as 2004, 2005, maybe earlier than that, that there was a problem with the women's population, that they weren't being properly served by the configurations in the jail. That's kind of a euphemism really for the situation. So I, I don't understand how something wasn't done immediately then. I also have been working with large networks of grassroots, often very, people from very different backgrounds and very different perspectives who have challenged me and have shown me effective ways to be agents of change. None of the people I've been working with over the last 25 years had any trouble understanding, first of all, the scope and the depth of the needs, nor did they have any trouble imagining creative change and positive change. I, as, as an elected official, will not have any problem imagining how I would hold other elected officials accountable. And yet I haven't seen any evidence until there was a crisis. So I think it is time to let people who have experience listening to voices on the fringe and listening to voices throughout the community and bringing them in in discussions and deliberations to make change. I have experience doing that and I'm ready to do it. Thank you.
So I want to say thank you very much for that little segment there. I know, like we said, we all get a little bit long-winded, but thank you very much. Let us move on to accountability. Since May of 2016, we have repeatedly asked the county leadership.
Stephen, sorry, we skipped over the, the short clarifying question.
Go ahead.
For the.
You got it.
And again, this is similar to the other one, just a summary for clarity of what we've been talking about. Your leadership and your budget-making decisions make a huge impact on the future of incarceration. We, we realize the county commissioners don't themselves personally lock people in the jail, but the county commission has a lot of control over the money and the money has a lot of control over a lot of things. So I will ask all of you this last question to clarify your position on the jail. And again, there will be time at the end if you feel like you need to explain your position a little more. But for this, we're just going to ask for a show of hands on Zoom to make sure that, that we heard what we thought we heard you saying, which is yes. As a county commissioner, if you support this, I invite you to raise your hand. As a county commissioner, I will rescind the January 29th decision or I will vote to rescind the January 29th decision to, to issue the bond. And I will work towards alternatives and reforms before, again, considering a jail expansion. If you will rescind and work, thank you very much. Now it's all you, Stephen.
Thank you very much. As I was stating there, since 20, since May of 2016, we have repeatedly asked the county leadership to work with the Vera Institute for Justice to do what Vera has done for local communities across the country. Use data to identify opportunities to safely lower the use of our jail and alleviate overcrowding. At the request of Justice Matter, Vera has doubled down on their offer to help. They recently offered to analyze the use of our jail from pre and post-COVID analysis. Also, they have offered to provide an ongoing dashboard tool which allows citizens to evaluate the impact of the new initiative, all with no consulting fees charged to the county. The district attorney candidates last week said they would provide data and work with Vera. The sheriff candidates, however, had questions. For this reason, we asked Jasmine Heist with Vera Institute to join us for a few minutes to explain the offer and answer any questions that you may have. While Jasmine is pulled into this panel, I want to encourage you to ask any questions because after she is off, we want to hear your thoughts on working with Vera. Hello, Jasmine. Please briefly describe the offer Vera has generously offered the county. And then we will let them ask you any questions that they may have.
Thank you so much and it is such a pleasure to be with you all this evening. I should apologize in advance as we're all working from home. My cat may force her way onto the screen and make an appearance, so stay tuned. My name's Jasmine Heist again, and I help lead an initiative at Vera called In Our Backyards. And one of the reasons, you know, we have specifically reached out to, to your county, have been in touch is because our work is, is hyper-focused on the experiences of smaller cities and rural communities across the country. As we see major cities decarcerate, Chicago, Los Angeles, New York, at really historic levels, we don't see the same shift happening in smaller communities. And we believe that the most powerful change comes when local officials are working in partnership with and, and with the leadership of community-based advocates. And so the, the offer that we have made most recently is for what is really one of our newest innovations and newest solutions, which is our jail population project. We recognize that historically, the work to take a data-driven approach can be cumbersome, that it can be time-consuming. And we also believe deeply in transparency and citizen oversight and in accountability. It's incredible to hear the sort of momentum that is currently underway in Douglas County, the commitment to racial equity, to reforming the criminal justice system. And we believe that is one of the single biggest investments that a community makes, that who is being impacted by the jail, what the jail is being used for is something that not only should be a data-driven approach, but should reflect what taxpayers want, what citizens want, and something that should be transparent. And so with all of that in mind, you know, with the idea that, that data is knowledge, And so with all of that in mind, you know, with the idea that, that data is knowledge, that knowledge is power, and that sunlight is the best disinfectant, we've created a proprietary code that will plug directly into any jail management system. It's interoperable, so it doesn't require any new investment by a community, and it can provide fairly detailed granular analysis of, you know, for example, what are the average bond amounts that are keeping people behind bars? How do those compare to their charges, to their race or ethnicity, to their gender? What lengths of stay are associated with different kinds of charges? Are people sitting for a very long time on probation violations, for example, as was suggested in a previous report on the county? Are people sitting because there's a, a certain bond threshold that's unaffordable? How does the charges that people of different genders or different race and ethnicities sort of reflect either different kinds of biases or different kinds of experiences or policing criminalization and enforcement in communities? And so what we're offering for free again is, is something that should take very little of the county's time. I know that there were concerns raised on the sheriff's forum about what free actually means. And, you know, we anticipate that if you wanted to engage in this partnership with us, that it would take a, a little bit of your attorney's time to review a contract, perhaps a day to walk through with our analysts, with our data scientists, how to make this code work with the existing jail management system, and maybe a couple of other hours of meetings. But we're certainly not asking for a full-time hire or for someone to sit in front of a computer every day and extract data. This is precisely the kind of challenge that, that that solution is meant to, to avoid and to overcome. I also want to note really quickly, because there were concerns raised about the sensitivity of some of this data, that we have made a very principled decision at the Vera Institute not to include in any public-facing dashboard or even in our data extracts personally identifiable information that could be used to exploit people, to make them further vulnerable. We recognize that there is a horrific industry across the country of people who pull down mugshots from websites, who take personally identifiable information and often extort people for it. And so we've taken a, a strong stand against that because we believe that the people in the criminal justice system are often or always some of the most vulnerable people in communities. So with that, happy to answer any questions.
Yeah. There are questions from any panelists for Jasmine while she's here. Shannon, go ahead.
Hi Jasmine, thanks for joining us. I fan FIM just a little bit because I really love the Vera Institute and have, as somebody who works with trauma survivors who experience incarceration, some of the studies you guys have done about that in years past have informed the lens through which I do that work. So thank you for everything you've already done and what you're offering and that extra bit of detail. I think my biggest question about it is, I understand that it's very data-driven, which I appreciate and believe that there's an absolute need for. I wonder if in any of your studies in other communities, you were also weighing in anecdotal, kind of either listening sessions, talkback sessions, things that are really focused on people's lived experiences and how that is put side by side with, with the data. Because I think anecdotally, all the things you just described are, are true here. And there's evidence of it in lived experiences. So I just wonder if you can talk about that.
Absolutely. It's such an important question. I think just the data for both implementation, monitoring, ongoing reforms is sort of the baseline. And when we undertake either state legislative policy work or deep analysis and reporting at the county level, that is really the next layer. Colleagues of mine who, whose work you've cited in Spokane and elsewhere, for example, have spent a serious amount of time speaking to women incarcerated in the jail because of the rate at which women's incarceration is rising, people directly impacted by incarceration. Right now, we are preparing to field surveys in multiple states that explore people's criminalization of poverty, of substance use, of mental health issues to help sort of identify solutions. So you're right, like all things, data only tells part of the story, and this is ultimately a human problem.
I'd like to ask a question, and I appreciate your being here tonight for this panel. I guess I'm wondering if you, I'm, I'm sure you feel fairly familiar with Douglas County's work, but I wanted to just let we're working with already and what some of the pending studies and efforts are. So if we're working with the Council of State Governments, the Stepping Up Initiative, the Decent Criminal Justice Reform Center on Rural Criminal Justice, the MacArthur Foundation Safety and Justice Challenge, and this summer, to start with, the Gaines Center for Sequential Intercept Mapping. And then also, I think a real boon for us is the addition of Dr. Matt Craven, who with Mike Brower is, they've started this criminal justice system data collaborative with all the primary partners. And the three things that they have committed to focus on and give regular updates on are specifically what you said you would do with the Vera study, which is looking at bonding and length of stay and kind of race and ethnicity effort and where we are falling short and what we can keep focusing on and do. So I guess I'm kind of curious if, if your offer, as kind as it is and generous as it is, with all of that work ongoing and our own data analyst who is digging down deep and giving us really substantial and difficult news as he really digs into our numbers, if your work is, is so different from that work or if it is, kind of goes along in the same vein so that it might be redundant.
Interesting. Well, certainly, I think that our colleagues with MacArthur, at the Decent Center with whom we work closely, at the Council on State Governments, we often collaborate in different ways, both thinking nationally about the problem of rising incarceration and in specific communities. I would imagine, you know, given by your own description, the amount of work that it takes to extract data, to share it and to monitor some of the ongoing reforms, that it would actually support all of the work that you're doing. I mean, certainly, the, the work and the really early adoption of being part of this stepping up initiative is something that I would imagine you would like to be able to amplify and to highlight for your community, to be able to show over time, you are including flags for who in the jail has serious mental illness, how that's gone down. I will say, you know, based on an initial look at some of the bookings reports over the past year, I, I was shocked personally by the number of people who were booked on municipal-level charges, which is not necessarily something that you see in other communities. And so I imagine, again, that's one of the hard truths that you're confronting, the question of, you know, even if people are staying in the jail for 24 hours, why would they be in the jail at all, particularly given some of the, the consequences of even short terms of incarceration? So rather than asking all of these other partners who are undertaking these different areas of work to build you free tech, in addition to that, we certainly hope that it can help create some transparency and frankly, I think some faith from the community that all of this work that they hear about, but maybe don't see is ongoing, that it's underway, that they can understand what's being done.
I, I can, I can assure you that the municipal court is aware of what we're finding, and they're already working on some of those solutions as well as the police department. But thank you so much for your, for your interest and your presence tonight. Appreciate it.
So Sarah, we don't want to leave you out. If you got a question you want to ask, please.
Yeah, I'm, I'm curious. I, I think that the erosion of trust issue is a huge one in our community. And at this point, given a lot of pivot points and decisions that have been made and the process that was not offered our public for several years, I think it would be good to have more than one set of outside eyes coming in dispassionately and compassionately who have a national reputation for doing this work and figuring out how to augment what is already there. I think we couldn't have too much transparency. My questions are, or my question is, I know that on your website, you talk, you specifically are doing a lot of hard work around racial injustice and the criminal justice system. So I'm just curious, what are some of the patterns or some of the things that, that you're finding in other communities that are feeding that racial disparity that we, we see here, maybe even higher than the national average?
That's an excellent question. You know, one of the things that we've looked at very recently, specifically analyzing police department data, which again is just one of the many agencies that feed into a justice system, one of the many decision points, is that some of the low-level offenses for which officers have the greatest discretion to arrest or cite or take another action, disparities are often much, much wider. And so unfortunately, we haven't undertaken that analysis specifically for Douglas County or for Lawrence yet, but it's certainly something that stands out. Another pattern that we see across the country is, of course, at every decision point, but given the enormous power that prosecutors wield in a, in a system, different decisions around which cases to prosecute, there have been several offices more recently who have decided to do things like no longer prosecute charges that are brought in on Terry stops to understand what those drivers are and they know we're, we're going to take a racial equity lens. You know, one of the examples we've seen of, of a, a city commission sort of taking leadership on some of these issues, for example, is to pass a mandatory site and release policy where there is no longer the possibility of arrest for a whole array of lower-level offenses. And really, that's just the, the first stepping point, right? Others would lift up mandatory divert rather than just site. And so, you know, they're really at every point in the criminal justice system, as everyone has noted, there is the opportunity for bias. I would say because we're so focused on the front end, those are two huge pieces. And of course, critically examining the role that poverty plays with all of this, given the intersections between the criminalization of race and the criminalization of poverty, what does it mean to assess money bail, to assess surety bond in such a high number of cases and say, you know, we're going to uphold this two-tiered system of justice for the rich and the poor?
Well, we want to thank Jasmine for helping to make this offer a lot more clear for all of us. We will let you go now so that we can proceed with the forum. Thank you very much, Jeff.
Thank you for having me.
So to help us to clarify your position and save time, we're going to ask you a simple, to raise your hand if you agree with the summary statement on this topic. Again, there will be time at the end of the forum to clarify anything you wish. And it is this here. If elected, I would direct the directors of the CJCC to collaborate with the Vera Institute for Justice and other groups like them. If you can at this time agree to that statement, please raise your hand. Thank you. So will you ensure that the Crisis Center is fully funded to meet the needs? In November 2018, 71% of the voters supported a tax increase to support the construction and ongoing services of a new behavioral health center, which is now called Turning Point. Due to the pandemic, County Administrator Sarah Polinski has projected a 10% decrease in sales tax. Also, a grant for $750,000 that was approved to support the program at the Crisis Center by the state of Kansas has recently been recalled. Finally, an instrumental community partner to provide services at the Crisis Center, the Burton Nash Community Mental Health Center, has just laid off multiple staff due to the budget shortfalls. Justice Matters has advocated for the creation of this Crisis Center for five years. Over 5,000 citizens attended our public meetings in support of this center. Thousands of voters responded to our call to urging them to vote in favor, and the measure passed overwhelmingly. We are now very worried about this future. That being said, we know the county has several sources of funding to ensure the Crisis Center is not delayed and services outlined at the work session in June are not hampered. For starters, we pay off the current jail last December, but the sales tax that was passed in 1994 did not have a sunset. County Administrator Sarah Polinski has said that there are reserves on hand in excess of $9 million. The COVID-19 relief funding under the county discretion to be used for COVID-related is said to be over $25 million. We'll go back to start alphabetically by the last name, beginning with Sharon Reed. First, with two minutes, and then we'll move on to another subject. Here's my leading question. With that background, would you today promise to this community that the Crisis Center and all of its original range of services are fully funded? If so, how will you accomplish it? If not, why? Shannon Reed, thank you.
Yes, I will commit today and have been committed to fully funding that project and the, the full variety, array of services that you spoke about with the, the original intent, and where possible, expand on those. I believe that, I believe in safety and I believe in harm reduction. And those two things tell me that we have to shift our money and make it available to as many social services as possible, and that's behavioral and mental health, that substance use treatment and recovery and support, that's housing first for people, that's food security. Those things need to be funded more robustly in it, in that, to work in accordance with that mental health center so that people have access to all services that they need. Shifting money away from the jail expansion project, of course, upon rescinding that. And I believe that, you know, budgets are values documents. So the fact that 50% of our budget approximately on a county level is allocated to what is by and large called public safety, and that includes fire and EMS, absolutely necessary services for a community, and includes the, the operations of the jail, law enforcement operations in the community and district court, district attorney offices. Those, I don't believe align with the values of our community. And so I believe that there's funding that can be reallocated from those places into Burton Nash and the other mental health services, DECA, first step, finding more opportunities for substance use treatment and recovery options for people in the community and, and establishing more affordable housing and how to actually help support people sustain that housing because without that foundation, there's not much to build on.
Thank you, Shannon Reed. Commissioner Thelman?
So right off the bat, I need to reassure people that the Crisis Center is not in danger. The budget that we've planned for 2122 is a good, solid budget. That sales tax projection was based on trying to create a very conservative budget. But even if we did have a decrease in that sales tax, we have solid funding for the Crisis Center. And we expect to break ground on it later this year and have it open later in 2021. We've been working hard to, to make sure all the services that will be under that roof are, actually, those teams are already forming and those services are already being implemented all across the county. So when that door is open, we'll have the teams already well-practiced and well-familiar with our community and with each other, so they hopefully won't miss a beat. On top of that, we believe we'll be bringing on mobile response. We'll continue with our more robust prevention services, so hopefully we'll capture it into crisis, more focused on youth and behavioral health issues in our youth, working with all the superintendents. And we are investing millions upon millions of dollars on special housing with wraparound services, both on the behavioral health campus with transitional housing and permanent housing, but also. but also Project Able with a former Salvation Army project, artists helping homeless, a New Horizons project with the Housing Authority. Over $5.5 million since 2019 and into next year. Frankly, is a lot more than the city has spent so far for housing. We really do believe in that housing first issue and the Built for Zero principle that, you know, we will do everything we can to get people under a roof and in the security of their own home, which helps on, at every level helps with behavioral health problems, helps that might lead to some kind of incident with the law enforcement. But I just, and I also want to say
Fifteen more seconds, Commissioner.
The CARES dollars, the COVID money, that $25 million, that is not for already planned for capital expenses or operational expenses like the Crisis Center. That's for specifically COVID-related costs in education, in housing, in economic recovery and in health. And we're working hard with all sorts of folks across the county. There will be news about it pretty soon to include
Thank you very much. I appreciate the added there. Ms. Sarah, your thoughts on that, please?
Yes, I, and again, perhaps it goes back to that issue of erosion of trust that I can no longer kind of take at face value what I hear. It doesn't matter how much money has been invested. What matters is the gaps that still persist and remain. It doesn't necessarily matter what your other partners have invested compared to what you have invested. What does matter is how you are serving the public and the will of the public and the needs of the public. And so if $5 million isn't adequate enough to fast-track breaking ground on something that we've needed for over 30 years, it doesn't matter what good works you have done. We are now in a crisis. We now have a rising number of suicides. We have a rising number of destabilized people throughout the community, and we already were short on services. The county has a written agreement with the state to provide mental health services. So if it's not adequate, then the county is accountable for that. I would say if, when I become commissioner, the buck stops here. So I'm not going to rest on the laurels of the good things we have done. We managed somehow to do a test dig on that jail cell even before the budget was passed or known. And yet we still haven't broken ground on the mental health campus. I'm sorry, but I can't feel the same way that you do about that issue. I want to do better and we deserve better. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. We're going into our last topic, and so I have one more brief history lesson for you all as background to a question that you'll ask. You'll again have two minutes to respond with another just brief show of hands question, and then you will each have your time for closing comments to respond to things that you've heard or clarify points that you've been trying to make. So if you are elected, you would be expected to take an oath to uphold the Kansas Constitution. And there's some language in that constitution that I want to read to you. It says, "All political power is inherent in the people, and all free governments are founded on their authority and are instituted for their equal protection and benefit. The people have the right to assemble in peaceable manner, to consult for their common good, to instruct their representatives and to petition the government or any department thereof for the redress of grievances." And recently, it has not been the experience of many citizens in Douglas County, including those of us who participate with Justice Matters, that the county commission has acted as if all political power is inherent in the people. And there's a few examples. I'm not intending to air a laundry list, but to show a pattern that Justice Matters has asked the county commission to attend our NEOMIA Assembly, which is the largest peaceful assembly of Douglas County residents each year around local concerns for justice. That's happened for five years in a row, and only one of those years did one county commissioner attended. Three years ago, we were told publicly that the way for our concerns to be considered was not to present them at our NEOMIA Assembly, but to come to a county commission meeting, which we did, bringing hundreds of citizens, providing public comment. But in that context, there were not direct responses to our concerns. We witnessed at the January commission meeting where the bond to expand the jail was approved, that hundreds of citizens showed up, many spoke, including Stephen here, spoke against the jail expansion, and the county commissioners' response was to read statements that had seemingly been prepared before they heard any of those public comments, and it was a unanimous vote to approve the bond. And so we were told that you can get a response from the commission if you get on the agenda, which we did in 2017. And very shortly into our presentation, one of the commissioners was called away for a personal family issue, but we were never asked to return. The commissioners who remained present did not respond to what had been partially presented. And we've already mentioned the lawsuit that Justice Matters had instituted along with some citizens. But prior to that, we had made, and prior to the decision in January to issue the bond, we extended several invitations publicly and privately for conversation. And we showed up at county commission meetings. We did meet with one commissioner, but we all, we know the result of that jail, we were not able to meet with the county council. And we ultimately were not granted the right to petition our government about the issuing of the bond. So we're troubled by this pattern of the interactions between the county commission and citizens. We're speaking primarily on the half of Justice Matters, but I know this has not been solely our experience. And so Stephen has the question for that. Now you're muted, Stephen. We'll get the hang of it.
There we go. So let me ask you, working backwards, alphabetically by last names. If elected commissioner, what type of response can we see from you when people organize and ask for answers to questions in the public arena? We'll start with Commissioner Thelman and work our way backwards. Thank you.
So I would say that it is important for folks to be able to come to the county commission and be heard. And we do welcome folks to be on our agenda. And I remember when you were making that presentation about buying an old building and an old office building to turn it into the Crisis Center. And I felt, I did feel bad about that meeting being abruptly finished and not having your to be clearly heard or respected. And I do remember that. I would say it is the longstanding habit of the county commission to take public comment, but not interact with it, not to debate it, not to object to it, not to be, somehow to stop it or change it, but to allow people to speak their mind freely and feel that they can speak their mind freely without being pushed back on by the county commission. So that is our practice, that we don't use that public comment period as a time to debate or try and win the argument or change direction. So if that's perceived as being unresponsive, that is how we instruct ourselves to be public, so that all of that time is devoted to other people finally getting to speak and be heard by us. And I, in terms of the litigation against the county on the grounds of not being able to have a vote on the bond issue, I know that the judge dismissed that case for lack of grounds, but also for the authority that counties have to use when they have elections, no matter how long ago, if they're not sunsetted, those tax elections stand over time. And so we have that kind of bonding authority. Though again, in this case, it's a moot point because that bonding authority is not going to be used for the jail expansion as it was envisioned even just in January.
Thank you, Commissioner Thelman. We need to move on to the next person. But if I have a lot to say, and you'll have some time after I finish up your comments. We're trying to honor our 8:30 time as much as possible here. Sarah Taliapharo. How, and just to repeat, the question is, what type of response can we expect from you when people organize and ask for answers to questions in the public arena?
My leadership model is one that I believe, in which I believe it's very important to make space for the voices of others, and weave a narrative that includes them. I don't think that asking to be part of a deliberative democracy is ever a moot point. So I would beg to differ with you on that, Commissioner. Commissioner Thelman, sitting in the audience in the courthouse, was not that there simply was a listening and no response, but that commissioners took the words of the people who had testified and wove them into a narrative, often distorting the meanings of those words to weave them into a rationalization of the decisions that you were about to make. I cannot be more plain than that. That is not a deliberative democracy. That is not a meaningful public process. On the other hand, I have seen many examples and continue to hear of examples that are truly public participation. I've attended, I've been a part of the KU Public Management Center, and they hold a lot of classes and workshops in civic participation. They use public participation as an umbrella term that describes activities by which people's concerns and their needs and their values are incorporated into decisions and actions on public matters and issues. If I am elected, or when I am elected, to be the next county commissioner, I plan to engage with people in a deliberative process where they not only get to discuss and decide and are shared information so they can make good decisions, but I will allow them or invite them because they're experts in where they live. Yep, sorry, I've slapsed my time. I'll finish up later. Thank you.
Thank you. And Shannon, read your response.
I, sorry, I was processing those answers a little bit and trying to get my brain back to the question. So I believe that it is, it's completely necessary to listen to the voices and the will of the people, and that that is the point of elected officials, most especially and with the greatest impact when it comes to local elections. I mean, the decisions made in the Douglas County Commission Board meetings and additional work sessions, meetings with staff and the councils that they appoint people to are making decisions that impact community members every single day throughout Douglas County. And there is responsibility and accountability to be taken for that. It is necessary to involve the voices of the people. And so I'm here today and doing this thing where I wish to be elected as a county commissioner for a community that raised me to stand for my values and act when things are unjust, because I want to lift up the voices of people. And I have skills, because of being an advocate and being trauma-informed and the empathy skills and the facilitation skills that come along with that, to hold space for people to tell me what I need to hear, to ask them what their request is of me and of us as a government body, and then take space to deliberately and intentionally examine what I have the capacity to do in response. And so the January meeting was an example of there was no responsiveness and instead a predispositioned place, a vote that took place without any time to consider what the people came there to, to request of the county commission that day.
Thank you, Shannon. Stephen?
So before moving on, I want to ask a clarifying question. Justice Matter organized a gathering each year to lift up the concerns of the vulnerable and propose to some of the most pressing problems in our community. Previous leaders from the city, county, and police department have attended to respond to our concerns and proposals. If elected, will you ensure a county commissioner will attend, again, to give voters a clear sense and what to expect at the same time? I ask you to simply raise your hand if you ensure a county commissioner will attend and participate as an elective official in the future of Justice Matters.
Thank you all. Thank you all for your time this evening. And we'll move into closing comments here. 90-ish seconds, and you can use them as you wish, but I imagine there are some points that you'd like to clarify from questions or things you might like to respond to from other candidates. And we will go alphabetically, working backwards. So we'll begin with Commissioner Thelman. And as you're gathering your thoughts here for just a second, I want to remind those listening and our candidates that we are a nonprofit. Justice Matters is a nonprofit. We cannot, we do not, we will not endorse candidates, but we hope that these forums are a way of educating the voters about your stance on issues that are important to us. We will be uploading clips of the forum on the Facebook page in the coming days. The entire forum will be available for people to watch who weren't able to watch it live. And in case anyone would like to become a member of Justice Matters, you can email ajustlawrence, I wrote it on my little sticky note here, ajustlawrence@gmail.com. That's my high tech for the night. And now Commissioner Thelman, we will invite you to give your closing response.
I'll thank you so mu, yeah, I am unmuted. Thank you so much for providing this opportunity. And I think you've asked great questions and really challenged us to both speak from the heart, but also from some pretty deep homework that everyone's done. And I would say I speak also from a deep experience of almost 12 years now on the county commission. So I want to say that I think it's important to understand a narrative that hasn't always been told to its fullest by Justice Matters and folks who have been really adamantly opposed to the county's work on the jail. And that is that really did hear people say, when they said, "We need alternatives to incarceration. We need more mental health." And that's why we have worked over the last four years to provide quite a few alternatives to incarceration, the pre-trial release and the diversion programs and the special courts, as well uh, diversion programs and the special courts, uh, as well as now a pretty robust, um, uh, bunch of work that's happening, uh, within our criminal justice system that are, uh, it's very promising that we'll be able to get even more people out of the jail rather than, and in fact, right now, we have more people out of jail, uh, in, in our pre-trial release program than our people in the jail waiting for their trials. So, um, I think, I think the fact is, we actually have accomplished a lot in just a few years in terms of the alternatives that people want, and it's just not accurate to say that we haven't done anything in that, in that. And same for behavioral health. Um, we have not just invested money, but tons of time and effort, um, creating a whole coalition of eight different, uh, leading agencies in the community who are making tremendous progress in behavioral health and youth intervention and
Commissioner Thelman.
Oh, boy, that was fast.
This time, I know it goes fast, and, and I imagine that you all have, um, websites and Facebook pages where people can connect with you and find out more. Um, 90 minutes is not very long, but thank you so much. We'll move on to Sarah Talia Pharoah.
This year in particular has been a crazy year. We're living in a time of great unknowns and few assurances. Douglas County is facing multiple crises that include growing needs for mental health support, greater instability of families and single households, and economic hardship. The pandemic, pandemic has only exacerbated issues that already existed, and now we've reached a critical tipping point for our county. I'm running for county commissioner because I want to ensure that commission decisions do not place greater economic burdens on families at a time when they can be spared. I also am running because I'm ready to make that shift from an advocate to being an elected leader and everything that I believe should be in that. I think the time has passed to debate, uh, past records and talk about a, a vision for a greater future where people are provided research and a very robust process and a neutral space where they can voice, have a voice and be part of the decisions that affect their lives. I'm looking forward to serving you as your next county commissioner, and thank you.
Thank you, Sarah, and, uh, Shannon Reed.
Um, thank you, Joanna and Stephen, for facilitating this tonight and, um, making available all the opportunities that Justice Matters has for some public discourse and, um, voter education. I really appreciate the work that you've done, and, um, I think I want to spend most of, end of my time just expressing gratitude to Justice Matters, to, uh, for the kind of grassroots organizing that you all do for inspiring me in the past few years to be active in, um, fighting the jail expansion. Gratitude for Black Lives Matter movements, uh, and local organizers who are doing the work of, uh, demanding justice in our community, and Sanctuary Alliance, who's been doing crucial policy work with the city and who, um, who wants to do more work on the county level and address that. And, um, there's just so, so many grassroots organizing efforts in this community that have lifted up the voices of vulnerable people in our community in the past few years, and I'm grateful for that, and I'm grateful to be a part of those movements and be action-oriented and justice-oriented. That's why I'm here. Um, I wish to be elected as your District Two County Commissioner because I believe I bring a fresh perspective to the table and one that is rooted in the people's experiences of this community. Um, you can find me at shannonreed-dggco.com. I'm on Facebook and Instagram and Twitter, and, um, I would love to hear from any of you if you have follow-up questions. Thank you.
Thank you again so much to all of our panel, and a special thanks to, um, Stephen for being here on his birthday. Birthday moderating
Happy birthday!
Question. Um, and thank you all for, for joining us and listening in. That concludes our forum, so good night and God bless.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.